Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District 1, Harry Cohen. Representing District 2, Ken Hagan. Representing District 3, Gwen Myers. Representing District 4, Stacy White. Representing District 5, Mariela Smith. Representing District 6, Pat Kemp. Representing District 7, Kimberly Oberman. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning. Welcome to the Board of County Commission meeting on Thursday, October 6th at 9:00 a.m. I'd like to welcome everyone to the most wonderful county in the state, Hillsborough County. And with that, I want to call the meeting to order. Can we first do a... Actually, we'll do a roll call later because I think we have some folks that are on the way. We won't need to do that. But with that, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance invocation offered by Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask that everyone please stand at this time, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions for this county this morning. Father, I want to give thanks that we here in Hillsborough County were largely spared from tragedy in the wake of Hurricane Ian. But I'd like to ask for healing for the folks particularly south of here that were not so fortunate. Pray that you will just lay a healing hand upon them and guide them in the aftermath. As always, Father, I am thankful for members of our armed forces and first responders. I want to especially give thanks this morning to all of them for all that they've done in the wake of this terrible storm. Father, also want to give special... Ask for special blessings and healing for our first responder neighbors in Polk County in the wake of the tragedy that has happened over there. Just pray that you will guide them, comfort them, and lead them each and every day. Father, I ask for these blessings in your heavenly name.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I truly appreciate that. Today, we have very special recognitions and an award presentation. So those recognitions are being offered by each of our... Several of our commissioners. And Commissioner White, you have accommodation, and I'd love to recognize you for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would like to ask some special individuals to join me at the podium this morning for this special commendation that I'll be presenting. First, from the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Chad Cronister. Come on up and join me, please, Sheriff. Everyone that I call upon, please come up and join me at the podium. Chief Deputy Donna Lizinski. Colonel Tommy St. John. Colonel Joseph Marr. Colonel Robert Ura. Colonel Kristen Poor. Colonel Robert Barlow. And Master Deputy Marilyn Alvarez, the Hispanic Liaison. And from the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office Hispanic Advisory Council, Kathleen Carvalho. That's the president. Carlos Irazari, who's a member of the council. Roxana Rodriguez, member of the council. And from Hillsborough County, our very own Ellie Rodriguez, manager, Hispanic Affairs, Office of Community Affairs. Thank you all very much for joining me this morning. It's an honor to have you here. As our celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month continues, I'm proud to recognize an organization that is truly focused on making lives better in our Hispanic communities and building stronger trust in law enforcement. The Hillsborough County Sheriff's Hispanic Advisory Council is comprised of volunteers who provide a variety of services and events throughout the county to accomplish this mission. The council and its various members have been doing this for 40 years. Forty years. And let me tell you, these tireless volunteers are everywhere, delivering life-sustaining supplies, providing scholarships, hosting a golf tournament, you name it. Their amazing work impacts people of all ages. So at this time, there's more to learn from a short video. I'd like to ask county staff if they can queue up the video, and it should be available on the monitors here behind us.
The council was started in 1981 by, actually, by two Hillsborough County residents, Ray Fernandez and Walter Heinrich. So Walter Heinrich was the sheriff at that time, and his philosophy was actually to make the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office a part of the community, right? So what they did, they talked to other members of the community, and later in 1982, so like a year after, about 10 or 12 of them gathered at the Ebor City Columbia Restaurant, and that's when they had the first Hispanic council meeting. It was the first Hispanic council founded by a law enforcement agency in the United This is like the United Nations. We have people from all over, Venezuelans, Cubans, of course, Colombians, Peruvians, Puerto Ricans. And it's beautiful because that diversity actually brings a huge value to the community, to not only Hillsborough County, but again, to the connections and the partnerships that we make, thanks to all this huge diversity within our council. More than giving our scholarships, of course, you know, we give out our scholarships and also other technology, computers to deserving students, and also we support those communities with food and securities as well, right? So we give out back with food, so we have food drive and all that. More than our programs, I would say it's the connection that we have with the community. So our council is formed by about 18, 19 people, individuals from different areas and industries in the community, okay? Government, profit, nonprofit. And we have also our liaison, they're putting Marilyn Alvarez, and she helped us actually to be that liaison with the community. But as well, each of us in the council actually brings a unique strength and uniqueness to this. And it helps us even to reach out to more people in the community and make sure we clearly understand what they actually need in every sector of the community. I think that connection is what makes our Hispanic council stronger than many organizations that, you know, that are not for profits out there. I believe that more than giving back, it's giving opportunity. It's giving the opportunity to other people to progress and to have a better quality of life. So that's what we do. So it's not only giving out people money or giving out scholarships or giving food, but it's giving that opportunity to connect and to make sure that people in the county understand and other Hispanics, that they can be any of us, and in the future, they can represent their community the way that we do.
It's a great video. Thank you all for everything that you do. Without further ado, it is with sincere admiration that I present this commendation on the occasion of the council's 40th anniversary, and I'd like to read that commendation into the record. It reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Hispanic Advisory Council on its 40th anniversary of connecting the Hispanic community with the sheriff's office, a partnership that greatly benefits residents and builds unity. Founded September 7th, 1982 by then Sheriff Walter C. Heinrich and Sergeant Raymond E. Fernandez, the Hispanic..." The Hillsborough County Sheriff's Hispanic Advisory Council is the first council of its type for a law enforcement agency in the nation. The Sheriff's Hispanic Advisory Council is the chief liaison between the agency and the Hispanic community, providing a variety of initiatives, events, and activities that promote better understanding and trust between the agency and residents, ensuring a brighter future for all. Consisting of volunteers, the council has provided over $100,000 in scholarships through the HCC Foundation and the USF Latino Scholarship Program to deserving students, helping them overcome great challenges to make their dreams of an education come true. In addition, the council has provided meals for well over 2,000 families in need through its food outreach initiatives, 200 care packages for senior citizens, and donated more than 60 computers to children to help them achieve scholastic success, which are all phenomenal achievements. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend the Sheriff's Hispanic Advisory Council for its significant contributions to the community and wishes it many more years of success. Awarded today, the sixth day of October 2022, of course, signed by all seven of the commissioners. I'll present the commendation in just a few moments when we do a photograph, but first, I'd like to invite our very own Sheriff Chad Cronister to the podium to say a few words. Sheriff, it's great to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, Commissioner White. Thank you to the entire county commission. Thank you for your continued partnership. Thank you for this recognition. If we have a council that goes beyond the call of duty, it's our Hispanic Advisory Council. From during a pandemic when children needed to do more online learning, they were there to answer the call with getting computers to those at-risk youth and families that couldn't quite afford computers. From their food outreach, their back-to-school backpacks to make sure these children have the supplies, the tools that they need to have the same opportunities that every other child, they're always there. To watch their impact grow over the last five years that I've been the sheriff and watch the impact grow with each passing year, I'm humbled. I'm humbled to be a small part of the success and the impact that they have on this community. So thank you, Commissioner White, again, to the entire county commission. Thanks for always being so supportive. They even help us with our recruitment as we continue to work to be more diverse. Five years ago, we were in the low teens, and we hit 61% diversity here at the sheriff's office. They even have... They're our secret weapon when it comes to our recruitment mechanism. So thank you. Thank you to the Hispanic Advisory Council. Thank you for everything you do. And again, to the county commission, thanks for acknowledging a job well done.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. And Ms. Carvalho, I'd like to invite you to say a few words.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. Well, this is a very special day for the council, for sure. For many years, members of the council and the sheriff's office have provided meaningful volunteer hours to our community. And when I say meaningful, it's because they actually have been there when people needed the most. We have been there when people, when the families need financial assistance for scholarships for their kids, when they needed food, when they need computers, like the sheriff mentioned. So all of this is because of the support of the community, the support of each individual here. So we truly thank everyone, not only for being here, for helping us to help others in the community. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll officially present this commendation to you and the sheriff, and I'll ask that we step back towards the dais for an official photograph.
While we get ready for the next one, I do want to say thank you to all of those that volunteer their time to continue working on our community in partnership with the county. Those volunteer hours, those volunteer commitment, and that public service attitude is what makes this one of the most wonderful places in the world to live. With that, I'm going to actually recognize Commissioner Myers. She's going to bring us the next recognition.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair. With Hillsborough County Domestic Violence Task Force co-chairs Jennifer Kaufman and Tenille Maliski and State Attorney Susan Lopez, join me at the podium, please. Okay, is that right behind me? Welcome. Domestic Violence Awareness Month was launched nationwide in October 1987 as a way to connect and bring together individuals and organizations working on domestic violence issues while raising awareness for those issues. Over the past 30-plus years, much progress has been made to support domestic violence victims and survivors, to hold abusers accountable, and to create, update legislation to further those goals. The Hillsborough County Domestic Violence Task Force and all its partners have made significant strive in raising awareness and teaching people how to take preventive measures to eliminate domestic violence in our communities. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, it is a privilege to declare October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Hillsborough County. The proclamation reads, "Whereas domestic violence is a crime that threatens the safety of thousands of individuals through behavior to establish power and control. And whereas any person can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or religion. And whereas domestic violence traumatizes victims, harms families, threatens communities, and increases the likelihood for children who are subject to it to grow up and effect violence on others, creating a cycle of violence that must be stopped. And whereas victims require help to find the compassionate resources and healing they need, and domestic abusers should be punished to the full extent of the law. And whereas the powerful partnerships between state and local agencies, nonprofit and private organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the court, healthcare, legal providers, faith-based communities, and educational institutions are creating coordinated community response to domestic violence. And whereas Hillsborough County facilitates efforts to help victims of domestic violence obtain a wide range of social and legal services. And whereas the Hillsborough County Domestic Violence Task Force and all its partners are committed to raising public awareness about how to prevent, recognize, and stop domestic violence. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents to learn about and work together to end domestic violence, executed the sixth day of October 2022." And I'm going to ask Ms. Kaufman, Ms. Maliski, and State Attorney Lopez to share a few words with us. And I'm going to present the proclamation. Thank you, Jason. To the two of you. And thank you. I'll hear your comments.
We are honored today to be here with our commissioners, recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic violence is a vital issue that impacts so many. Over the last several years, our task force members have developed a coordinated community response to domestic violence. We've identified key initiatives collectively and have made productive progress in achieving those objectives. We want to thank Commissioner Hagan and the rest of the Board of County Commissions, as well as the county's Criminal Justice Office, for their unwavering support over the last several years. And our efforts, as well as the many system and community partners that comprise our county's Domestic Violence Task Force, some of which are present today in support. Without their time, effort, commitment, and commitment, we would not be able to progress forward. We look forward to continuing our efforts on improving the local response to domestic violence and making our community safer for domestic violence victims. Thank you again to each and every partner who has helped us in our efforts, and to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commission for their recognition this month.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Myers, and to other members of the commission. My name is Susie Lopez, and I am the State Attorney in Hillsborough County, and I am honored to stand up here with these wonderful women who represent so many people in this county who work to end domestic violence. My office prosecutes domestic violence cases every single day, and we are proud to represent the victims. We are honored to work with our law enforcement, Sheriff Cronister in the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, Chief O'Connor and the Tampa Police Department, all members of law enforcement, first responders, and our partners at the clerk's office, Cindy Stewart's office, as well as the spring. We are pleased to be here today and make a pledge to you that we will work very hard every day to support the victims of domestic violence and... Excuse me, to support the victims of domestic violence and to end domestic violence in Hillsborough County. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all for your comments. If you're part of the task force or one of the partners, will you please stand so that we can show recognition to you as well? Let's show some love. Thank you for all that you do. It's not an easy task for someone to come and report domestic violence anywhere, but we certainly appreciate you being one of the partners here in Hillsborough County. So at this time, we're going to go back and move, take some pictures.
Commissioner Myers, I'd like to make a real... A quick comment, though. You know, I don't see our clerk, Stuart, here today. Come on up, we'll do a photo. We'll do photo. Come on up. You can't hear me? Okay.
Yes, I missed the first part, what you said.
Okay. I just want to make a special recognition to our clerk, Cindy Stewart. This past year, she passed legislation to expedite the notice of a restraining order in order to protect domestic violence victims. That came out, it started out of Hillsborough County. The work that you have done has helped make that possible, and I just want to really celebrate that we've worked in an expeditious way to change the law in Hillsborough County as well as the state in order to make that commitment to our domestic violence victims. And thank you so much for the work that you've done. Okay. You can't say we don't do it right in Hillsborough. And Commissioner Myers, you are recognized again for the next proclamation, I mean recognition,
Thank you. It is my pleasure to honor our Hillsborough County youth for their shining examples of how young people can lead the charge in addressing and alleviating bullying in our community. I would like to invite Dr. Oliver Massey, the Chair of the Anti-Bullying Committee, to join me at the podium and tell us more about the Anti-Bullying Recognition Award.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. First, let me say I appreciate the support of the Board of County Commissioners, in particular Commissioner Gwen Myers for her support of the Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee and the activities we do. You know, we continue to work with the schools and criminal justice and parks and recreation and libraries and community agencies in addressing bullying. And quite honestly, one of our favorite things, I think, is to... One of our favorite activities is to recognize young people who have worked so well in the community to address bullying and cyberbullying, and it's just a real pleasure to be here for that purpose.
Okay. Don't go anywhere. Stay right there. Thank you so much, Dr. Massey. The Anti-Bullying Recognition Award goes to a young person or a group of young people up to age 19 to highlight their amazing efforts to eliminate bullying. This year's Anti-Bullying Recognition Award winner is Emma Camber. She was nominated by her teacher, Ms. Catherine Jones, with Emma and her parents, Richard and Heidi, as well as Hillsborough County Public School Superintendent Addison Davis, joined me at the podium. Come on, sit right there. To our future leader, probably one day be a county commissioner running our county. Welcome. Emma Camber is 11 years old and a fifth grader at Lawton Child's Elementary School. Here are a few examples of Emma's leadership, education, advocacy, and intervention efforts. Emma shares a classroom with many students of unique abilities and personalities. At the beginning of the 2021-22 school year, there were situations where children were bullying others. Emma befriended some of those students who were bullied and helped encourage and support them with her friendship. What's most special about Emma is her kindness and compassion toward all people, regardless of their differences. One student in particular came to her class with a negative feelings toward classmates due to his past experience. The student was below grade level and overwhelmed with academic demands, which often results with him being in tears. Emma befriended this child, including him in games and encouraged him in classroom. She helped transform the entire class perspective of this student through the compassion and kindness she models daily. This child, Emma, the entire school and peers' experience have been improved significantly thanks to Emma. There was another student in Emma's class who was teared due to having special need. Emma also befriended this student and included him in the playgroup. Going... Emma also befriended this student and included him in the playgroup, going out of her way to make sure he was always included. These are not the only students Emma has helped. When peers attempt to tease or bully other children in the classroom, she immediately speak up. That's leadership. Her compassion, patience, and care has inspired other students in her school to treat each other with more acceptance and grace. Emma's future goal includes becoming a pastry chef or owning her own bakery. Well, I love sweets, but not too much. So we're also proud of her accomplishments. It is an honor to present her with the 22 Anti-Bullying Recognition Award. Congratulations. And I'm going to ask at this time, Emma, I know you can do this. You're not shy. You're a leader. You're one of our future leaders. Would you like to share some words with us, as well as her parents and superintendent Dave?
Yes, ma'am. Emma?
Hello, my name is Emma Campbell, and I would like to say thank you to everyone who earned an award today. And I would just like to say thank you to my family and friends for always encouraging me to be kind to others and my teacher for nominating me for this award. I hope that this award shows everybody that you should be kind to others because everyone needs a friend and you don't know how much they need another person like them. And I hope that, I hope that everyone's kind to other people because it can really make a difference in their life. Thank you.
So there you see the outstanding bright stars of this community, the future of this community, not only in, you know, a future commissioner, but also a future superintendent, potentially, having those fun times. You get days off like this. But we want to thank Commissioner Myers and the entire commission for continuing to be game changers in this community. But we look at, you know, you know, Emma, congratulations for this award, but thank you for being a shining star to others in this entire community. You know, for you to be able to create systemic change within your classrooms, to give other students a sense of hope, a sense of care, we appreciate you tremendously. One out of every five students identified, identifies himself of being bullied in some part in time, but it's individuals such as Emma that take the stand to be able to actively, you know, engage others, to give them a place to be able to feel comfortable psychologically and physically, whatever it may be. We appreciate you so much for your leadership. Thank you for being a trailblazer. Thank you for your teachers and your support staff, and more importantly, thank you for your parents. You, you know, our first educators are our parents. For you being here and creating the core values that we have at our dinner table that transitioned to the classroom help us become remarkable and better. We need more Emmas in this world. We'll be a better place. Congratulations to you. We thank this commission for recognizing you for your ongoing leadership within this community and our classrooms. Congratulations, Emma.
Thank you for your kind remarks. At this time, I would like to ask Elijah Hewing from Windward Wealth Management to present a special gift to you, Emma. He's a sponsor of the Anti-Bullying Recognition Award. Mr. Hewing?
Thank you. All right. Thank you. My name's Elia Hewing. I'm a private wealth advisor and founding partner with Windward Wealth Management, which is a private wealth advisory practice of Ameriprise. I want to thank Commissioner Myers, the Board of County Commissioners, the Hillsborough County Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee for continuing to bring attention to this increasingly important area. Special thanks to Dr. Jeanne Wilsley for getting me involved with this award back at its inception in 2018. Stock market economic drama aside, we've been very fortunate, and I do truly appreciate the opportunity to give back. I, for one, am happy to be here in person. The last few years have been challenging. We have no idea really what the impact of a COVID lockdown, virtual school, and Zoom birthday parties will have, what that will have on a generation of children. In my day job at Windward Wealth Management, I try to keep, try to help people from a financial perspective really accomplish the things that are most important to them, right? Financial independence, sending kids to school. The numbers can be hard, but the emotional part is so much harder. As it turns out, it's far too easy to lose contact with other people on a social, you know, impactful level and remember how to treat each other. Our connections with other people have been hard to maintain as adults, you know, and probably more so even for, for kids with school districts around the country having to call in the National Guard to help deal with behavioral issues. It's been a struggle to get back to normal. So two key words about this, the year's winner, Emma Campbell rang out to me kindness and compassion. Your ability to see the best in people is really an example for all of us. So congratulations to Emma, her family, her teachers. Thank you for a success story. And if you open a bakery, I will come for pie.
Thank you, Mr. Hewing. And again, thank you, Emma, our future leader. Continue to share your ideas and befriend other students as you continue to go out Hillsborough County school system. Thanks. And again, this is, this is from Windward? Okay. This goes to Emma as well. And now we'll go to the back and take a picture.
Emma, congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations. You guys could come back.
Staff will come up. They're part.
But Emma, I want to say thank you for your courage. It takes courage to do anti-bullying work and to be kind.
The Anti-Bullying Advisory Committee.
Come on up. And we'll take a photo together to celebrate your award. Our next award will be given by our Chair, Commissioner Kimberly Overman.
Good morning again. I have the pleasure of presenting the proclamation that October 2022 is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I want to thank Commissioner Myers for the past, the last two awards and recognitions because those were as critical as the success of this, of this effort as well. I'd like to ask the following guests to join us. Dr. Avan Arman Gudani to join me along with Dr. Bobby McKee. And from Planned Parenthood of Southwest and Central Florida, Dr. Robin, I'm going to mess this up, Schickler, is that correct? Our chief medical officer for Planned Parenthood. And Kate Thompson, hi, Director of Government Relations and Community Engagement, also from Planned Parenthood. Welcome. Thank you very much for joining us. And it's important that we recognize that each year breast cancer affects well over 200,000 people in the United States. The good news is the disease is curable, thanks to dedicated medical professionals, researchers, and numerous others. Early detection and intervention is key. New treatments and therapy, regular breast exams, mammograms that have resulted in reducing breast cancer death rates over the last 30 years. Numerous local organizations are instrumental in providing the best resources for breast cancer detection and treatment. In fact, yesterday and today, Hillsborough County is hosting the Advent Health 3D Mammogram Bus right here outside of County Center for the benefit of our employees because we recognize how important it is that early detection is possible. And our employees are so busy, sometimes they don't have a chance to go out to get one. I am guilty of that. In honor of these life-saving events, the Board of County Commission recognizes October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month every year, and I'm very proud to offer this proclamation. I'm going to ask if you don't mind holding these up so they can see them, and we'll put them on the screen. It reads, whereas according to the Susan G. Komen Organization, an estimated 287,850 women in the United States will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer in 2022, with 43,250 losing their lives. And whereas in 2022, more than 2,700 men will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer in the U.S., and approximately 530 of them will lose their battle. And whereas according to the Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County has the 19th highest annual incident rate of breast cancer among women in the 67 counties in 2019. And whereas researchers across the world are continuing to develop new imaging tests, treatments, and other procedures to find better ways to prevent, detect, and treat breast cancer and improve the quality of life of patients and their survivors. And whereas since 1990, death rates from breast cancer have been declining, in part due to the improved screening and early detection, increased awareness, and improved treatment options such as surgery, radiation, hormone therapy, chemotherapy, and targeted therapies. And whereas according to the American Cancer Society, when breast cancer is detected early and is localized and in the localized stage, the five-year survival rate is 99%. And whereas in Observation of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Hillsborough County partners with area healthcare providers, such as those here today, doesn't say that, but such as those here today, to provide mammogram exams in ongoing effort to enhance early detection, increase the quality of life, and raise awareness of breast cancer throughout the county. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commission of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Hillsborough County and urges all women and men to be screened for this disease and encourages everyone to learn more about breast cancer risk factors during the month of October, executed the sixth day of October 2022. And with that, I'd like to welcome Dr. Arman Gudani, is that right? Is that right? Did I say that correctly? I'm sorry. I'm going to make it messed up. I apologize. I knew when I, when I said it the first time the wrong way, it was going to stick with me. I apologize. But I'd love to introduce you and ask you to speak, say a few words.
Thank you so much, Chair Overman, and thank you to the entire County Commission for this recognition. I am a breast medical oncologist at Moffitt Cancer Center, so I treat both men and women with breast cancer. As Chair Overman had spoken already, breast cancer is the most common cancer in women in the United States, and it is the second-leading cause of cancer death, just behind lung cancer in women. That's why October and really every month is an opportunity to raise awareness on prevention, early detection, and treatment of breast cancer. Over the last few decades, there have been incredible scientific breakthroughs that have really revolutionized how we diagnose and treat breast cancer. And we've also been making significant strides to identify barriers and improve access to quality cancer care. So thank you again for this wonderful opportunity and this amazing recognition. And I would like to leave you all with this one last thing. Mammograms save lives. We know that. So I urge you all to get your screening mammogram every year, starting at the age of 40, and also to encourage your mom, your sister, your friends, your coworkers, because I truly believe that together we can win this fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. As a past patient of cancer, Moffitt Cancer Center, to determine whether or not I was experiencing breast cancer, I am so thankful for the resources that you have. My mom's a survivor because of the early intervention, and so I'm very, very happy that you're in our community. I'm also very happy that we have Planned Parenthood with us represented, that oftentimes offers access to mammograms that are not otherwise available. And so with that, I'd like to ask Dr. McKee to come offer us some thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Overman, and thank you, county commissioners. It is my honor to accept this plaque on behalf of Planned Parenthood of Southwest and Central Florida, and more importantly, on behalf of our hardworking staff and our Tampa centers that serve our Hillsborough County communities. As been discussed, more than 287,000 cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in the U.S. alone this year. As an OB-GYN, I'd be remiss not to use this platform to discuss breast cancer risk factors and screening recommendations. Anyone with breasts should be having a clinical breast exam by a provider every one to three years, starting at the age of 25, and every year starting at the age of 40, as well as a mammogram starting at the age of 40 every one to two years. People should talk to their doctor if they or a family member has been diagnosed with breast or ovarian cancer because they may be at higher risk and may need more regular screening. Our mission at Planned Parenthood is to deliver care no matter what. With or without insurance, patients can always find high-quality health care at our Planned Parenthood affiliate. This includes cancer screenings, breast health and mammogram referrals, annual wellness exams, and more. Thank you again, Commissioner Overman and county commissioners, for recognizing our incredible health center. And thank you Moffitt Cancer Center for the work that you do in our community. It is an honor to receive this plaque at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Schickler?
That was Dr. Schickler.
I'm sorry. I thought I said McKee. Okay. It is Dr. McKee?
The Moffitt.
Right. Did that, did that. Sorry. It's been a long couple of weeks. I would, my apologies. And Director Thompson?
Oh, Dr. Schickler said everything.
She said everything. Okay. Well, great. I want to thank you all for being here and helping us celebrate a very important awareness that we need to do that will actually save lives. And so we'll can step back and take some photos. Come on back. Go ahead, Ms. Wise.
Thank you. I'll go through the changes to the agenda. We have one item that has been deferred. This is Item A40, which is the Approved the Grant Cooperation Agreement with the Pinellas Sunco's Transit Authority, and that has been deferred to October 19th. We have one revision to the agenda, Item C1, which is to receive a report on Hurricane Ian. That is now set for 9:30 a.m. time certain. We have several items for time certain, first one being Item C1 at 9:30 to receive a report on Hurricane Ian. Item D1 at 10 o'clock is to conduct the second of two required public hearings to enter into a school concurrency proportioned share. a school concurrency proportion share mitigation development agreement with the School Board of Hillsborough County and Fishhawk West Investments, LLC, to allow the proposed Hawksburn Phase IV project to satisfy school concurrency. Item D2 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing, accept the recommendations of the hearing officer and emergency medical planning council, and approve a new certificate of public convenience and necessity for Florida Health Sciences Center, Inc., doing business as Tampa General Hospital, to operate an ambulance service. Item D3 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing, accept the recommendation of the hearing officer and emergency medical planning council, and approve a new certificate of public convenience and necessity for Gallon Care, Inc., doing business of HCA Florida Brandon Hospital, to operate an ambulance service. Item G1 at 10:15 is to receive the Arts Council Division's annual report with a special appearance by Mr. Randy Cohen, Vice President of Research Americans for the Arts. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Move the changes.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by everybody else. I would say I heard Commissioner Smith first, so for the clerk. Please indicate your vote. I think every, no, actually, is Commissioner Kemp online by some chance, or she's still delay? She is here? Okay, so she's on her way. Okay, please indicate your vote.
Orley is here.
Are we going to record the vote?
Motion carried six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We're entering into this section of our meeting that is public comment. The Board welcomes comments from citizens on any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members. However, it is requested at this time that you address the Board that comments not be directed personally against a Commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the Board and the public, and the Board is set aside 45 minutes in the morning, immediately following the changes to the agenda, for public comment. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board may hear public comment at the end of the meeting, and anyone who wishes to speak virtually or in person during the meeting must do so by completing the online public comment form found at hcflgov.net/speakup. The form is open to the publics. Sign up 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting, and there is an option to notify comments when you're doing that, whether it's virtual or in person, and you may sign up at the kiosk at the County Center downtown, in downtown Tampa. Assistance is available between 8:30 and 9:00 a.m. for those that need assistance in signing up to speak. For participants who wish to speak virtually, who have completed the form, the speaker has been provided a call-in number and will be provided so that we're able to facilitate logging them in or allowing them to speak when it is their turn. This information is being requested to facilitate the public comment process. Sign-ups for both virtual and in-person speaking opportunities for public hearings and public comment close at 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. I will call on each speaker in the name on which they were received, and prioritization is given on a first-come, first-served basis. The boardroom seating capacity is 85 visitors for special recognitions, public comment, and viewing, which does allow those to participate in the public process. If capacity is met, overflow is accommodated on the first floor. Face coverings are still strongly recommended in the boardroom, especially if health is compromised in any way. And virtual speakers will be muted until they're called. With that, up to three minutes are allowed for each speaker, and I will call the first speaker that signed up and who's participating virtually, and that is Ms. Sharon Calvert. Ms. Calvert, are you available?
Good morning. Yes, this is Sharon Calvert, and I do want to thank all the first responders and volunteers who have helped those impacted by Hurricane Ian. The county handed in June to engineering firm HNTB a $700,000 contract for a transportation education campaign that's related to the transit tax on the November ballot, and a website was set up which allows the public to ask questions. However, when questions have been asked about specifically what the 30-year tax will fund and what the specific benefits it will provide over the 30 years, the county has directed me to, or others perhaps, to the Hillsborough County TPO's 20-year 2045 LRTP. AST All for Transportation claims that it is their tax on the ballot again, and they claim that their tax is based on the TPO's 20-year plan. However, so it appears that the county has put a $23 billion 30-year tax on the ballot to fund a 20-year plan. And I guess the question is why? The TPO's 20-year plan is very outdated, and the data used is old, including very old cost estimates from their previous 2040 20-year plan. According to the TPO, their 20-year long-range plans are just visionary. They are used to look at various transportation funding scenarios. It's not an engineered plan. It's not an implementation plan. And the TPO's current 20-year plan is so flawed that even with the transit tax, the TPO uses 100% of the reauthorized half-percent infrastructure tax, also known as the CIT or stadium tax, that will expire in 2026. And that's not even visionary. That's basically totally irrational. And only five county commissioners sit on the TPO's 14-member board. The county commission cannot delegate their appropriation decision-making to the TPO. So why did this county commission codify the TPO's LRTP in ordinance 22-9 that put the tax on the ballot and use funding allocations from an outdated 20-year plan that's basically worthless today? A majority of the commissioners sit on the Hart board. Hart's going insolvent with ballooning operating expenses and dismal ridership, and Hart has failed to comply with FDOT's rule to submit an approved, not a draft version, updated 10-year transportation development plan to FDOT by September 1st. However, a draft version from August on page 137, it states that they, Hart, must find a new operating revenue source, and that they are looking for the sales tax to provide that revenue source to achieve financial sustainability.
Thank you, Ms. Calvert. Your time has expired. The next speaker is Dr. Davis, Dr. Davison, who is here in person.
Jim Davison from New Tampa. Thank you, Board. Those were some great proclamations and recognition awards this morning, and I didn't know it, but I'm basically here to recognize this Board. I didn't bring a proclamation, but I brought plenty of facts. And I'd be willing to bet that the average person in this county doesn't know that this Board, for the first time in 30 years, achieved a four-year time span from FY19 to now without ever rolling back a single property tax in 30 years. That's quite an accomplishment. That's almost as much as 62 home runs. It happened just the other day. So four members on this Board have never rolled back property taxes in Hillsborough County. Some of them have rolled back multiple millages in property taxes, saving thousands of dollars to homeowners. Ad valorem taxes went up only 14% last year, 14%. They've gone up 40% in the last three years. That's quite an achievement, and my hat's off to you. You guys should put yourselves in the stock market at those rates, and you could just bid yourself up, and we wouldn't have to have any taxes. It would be incredible. Transportation impact fees, mobility fees, up 97% in the last three years. License and permits, up 42%. Charges for service, up 27%. And on the expense side, compensation over the last three years is up 35%. Yeah, 35%. Operation and maintenance increased 10% in the last year, but 63% from 2020. The operating budget for the county has currently increased from $2 billion in FY2020 to $3.037 billion in 2023, almost a billion-dollar increase. 66% of that increase came from the county administrator's office, 66% from one office. All of the other constitutional offices combined, including the sheriff's office, only went up 19% in that time period. Those are remarkable achievements. And, you know, the taxpayers of this county have to have their hat off to you. But, you know, when the people were talking at the public meetings, they couldn't find things in the budget, and to tell you the truth, I've been looking at it for 25 years, and I still can't find everything. But...
Thank you, Dr. Davison. Your time has expired.
Thank you. To be continued.
I do not have any other public speakers for this item. I do have two individuals that have signed up for the public hearings, so we'll address those as we open those public hearings. And we are at the approval of the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm going to recognize Ms. Wise, but before I do, I want to tell, I want to make a couple of comments before we address our time certens. This last week has been very interesting in Hillsborough County, just because of all that's happened. As we prepared for Ian, as our residents prepared for what looked like it was going to be a direct hit, I am so proud of not only our residents that listened and worked hard to be best prepared as best they could, but also of all the employees and the various partner agencies and nonprofits that worked so hard to keep our community safe and to be available. It was a yeoman's effort. We should be very, very proud. We were prepared. Now that we've seen what this hurricane has brought to our neighbors to the south, we are reaching out and helping those as well. So I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that worked so hard. We'll hear more later about all the wonderful things that were done, the efforts that were put forth, but I do, I just want to say thank you to my Board members and to our county staff, Ms. Wise, Mr. Dudley, all of our law enforcement, our fire rescue, and all of our employees, as well as the school board and school employees, that really stepped up and helped everyone be best prepared. And with that, Ms. Wise.
Thank you. And I was going to lead in with some very similar comments, so we will echo each other very well, I think. And today, we do have a brief overview. It is Item C1 for 9:30 to receive a report on Hurricane Ian, and that is going to be led by Hillsborough County Emergency Manager Tim, Director Tim Dudley. As we know, here in Hillsborough County, and Hurricane Ian was a devastating storm, especially for our neighbors in southwest Florida, and our hearts and prayers are with them as they go through the very long recovery and rebuilding process. As I've shared with you publicly and privately, I couldn't be prouder of how our community came together before, during, and after the storm, and it is a result of years of planning and coordination, and I thank you for your support and involvement. You were always there when we needed you, whether it was for a press conference, a media interview, or citizen feedback. We should all be incredibly proud of the Hillsborough County staff. There were literally thousands of employees who went above and beyond to serve this community, and I am forever grateful for all they have done and continue to do. We have learned so much through this process, all of which will be documented in our after-action report. Everything, big or small, will be considered with the sole objective of making improvements to better serve and deliver in the future. I know you have shared several observations and experiences, too. It will all be captured for action for improvement. I appreciate all the feedback. It is that feedback that will help us perform even better as we go forward. I've also spoken to Pinellas County Administrator Barry Burton, who I communicated with multiple times during the activation, and we plan to share each other's observations so we can learn even more. Today's report is preliminary report. As much information is still being gathered and analyzed, but we wanted to provide you with some data. We appreciate that Superintendent Addison Davis and Sheriff Chad Cronister stayed after the proclamations today to be here for this overview. The partnership that we have with these organizations, the cities, and others cannot be underestimated. It is truly all of us working together for the residents of Hillsborough County. We appreciate also that we have representatives from TICO, Josh Baumgartner, and Sherri Jacobs, who are also here virtually for any questions that you may have. And we have members, of course, of our incredible staff for additional questions. Some are here in person, as you see, and some are on virtually, too. I'd be remiss if I tried to single out every single one. I know there are just too, too many. We'd be here all day. They are truly our heroes. I think some of you know that I have this motivation app on my phone. I've shared some of the little motivations that come up on my phone. Comes up twice a day, but on Saturday, this quote came up. "When a team of dedicated individuals makes a commitment to act as one, the sky is the limit." And I couldn't agree more, and that just happened to randomly come up on Saturday. So with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Director Dudley, whose calm and thoughtful demeanor led us through this event. Tim, thank you for your leadership. The entire community thanks you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Administrator Tim Dudley, Hillsborough County Office of Emergency Management Director. Thank you for allowing us to provide an update on Hillsborough County management responsive recovery efforts from Hurricane Ian. As the Administrator mentioned, we have a number of team members here, partners here, ready to answer any questions as I guide you through a brief overview of the actions that were taken leading up to the storm and where we are currently today. Slide, please. Hurricane Ian made landfall as a major Category 4 hurricane in Key O'Costa, Florida on September 28th, with sustained winds of at least 155 miles per hour. Storm surge is estimated to have reached 18 feet in some areas. As of this morning, Hurricane Ian's death toll reached more than 100 people, two of them in Hillsborough County. Hurricane Ian's current death toll surpasses Hurricane Andrew, Irma, and Michael. I'm going to show you a brief simulation of the storm track to provide a clear picture as to the actions we took. Based on the storm track, you can clearly see why we can call for a mandatory evacuation for Zone A and B. The storm was forecast for a rapid intensification, and storm track was highly uncertain. Hurricane Ian caused hazardous conditions throughout the entire state of Florida. Please return the slides, please. In addition to the track, I wanted to share a few highlights from Monday, September 26th. Ian was located 100 miles west of Grand Cayman Islands and about 380 miles southwest of Key West, Florida. It was expected to make a northeast turn towards our community. The Euro model had the eye wall coming right at Tampa Bay, and a 15-foot storm surge was predicted. Next slide, please. With this information at hand and knowing the time it takes to evacuate, the number of people living in Zone A and Zone B, we moved to a Level 1 full activation, mobilized shelters, and later that morning issued a mandatory evacuation of Zone A and a voluntary of Zone B for the afternoon affected mass evacuation of over 300,000 Hillsborough County residents. Next slide, please. Ian was located 310 miles southwest of Fort Myers with sustained winds of 125 miles per hour, a Category 3, moving north at 12 miles per hour. Rainfall forecast for our community increased to 24 inches. Given this information and additional details, we called a mandatory evacuation of Zone B and expanded shelter operations for specialties residents. Next slide, please. The center of Hurricane Ian was located 140 miles south of St. Pete's The center of Hurricane Ian was located 140 miles south of St. Pete Beach with sustained winds of 140 miles per hour. We're now looking at a Cat Four moving north, northeast at 10 miles per hour. Its eye wall was 53 miles wide. It's important to note, most of Hillsborough County remained in the cone at this time. Next slide. Knowing what we were facing, the EOC moved to the Level One and activated more than 250 employees for 24-hour operations. We placed over 3,000 employees on alert with more than 1,900 focused on shelter operations. Next slide. We provide, county teams provided our, our citizens with more than 91,000 sandbags at three locations. Next slide. Human Services Branch and Logistics Team successfully opened 50 shelters in anticipation of local evacuees and surrounding counties. A huge logistical effort, and I commend the teams. I would like to thank Hillsborough County Public Schools for their support in transportation, sheltering, and serving thousands of meals for evacuees and making the critical sources for our safe havens readily available in a timely manner. Working with strong community partners, we are able to meet any food and water unmet needs at this time. Hot meals were coordinated through World Central Kitchen in partnership with Metropolitan Ministries. Next slide, please. Transportation, our transportation partners at Sunshine Line, Hillsborough County Public Schools, HART, our ambulance providers, provided critical transportation for some of our most vulnerable population here in the county. Next slide, please. Multiple critical health facilities were safely evacuated. Over 40 acute hospital placements were coordinated without incident. Next slide. Hillsborough County Fire Rescue deployed technical search and rescue units, ran more than 78 calls throughout the response. Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office staff approximately 25 shelters 24/7, along with providing the EOC support, Mosley Logistics Operations, and, and, and I'd like to commend them for helping us carry the message to the public when the time was called to begin movement. Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, Tampa Fire Rescue, provided advanced life support, rescue squads for multiple specialty shelters. The city of Tampa also provided 100 shelter support staff. Next slide, please. Our community emergency response team and our amateur radio operators really stepped up to support the community, taking on any challenge, filling the gap wherever we needed them. Next slide. We maintain a robust public communication, a, a key element to support life safety efforts, and Hillsborough County channels were a trusted source of factual information for our residents. Our website alone saw more than 2.8 million unique page views, and as you can see in the image here depicted, a true community effort from all the leaders around the county, and I thank them for standing tall in the time faced of danger. Next slide. Our TECO partners provided 3,000 crew members from other utilities, including line workers, tree trimmers. Damage assessment assessors from 13 states came from far away as Oklahoma. TECO also provided 24-hour customer service coverage, including support from out-of-state utilities due to call volume. The TECO team did an incredible job meeting the needs of the community. As of this morning, happy to report, we are seeing just a few outages after seeing immediate impacts well over 200,000. Next slide. We have widespread impacts throughout the county. FEMA assisted teams are making their way throughout the county, helping with individual assistance registration as we speak. They are currently working in the Riverview, Wyomama, Little Manatee area to identify residents needing individual assistance. They will continue working with the Emergency Operations Center as we set their mission list to move throughout the county to take the assistance straight to the citizens for their needs. Next slide. Hillsborough County opened four residential yard waste debris drop-off sites. Curbside pickup of large branches or tree trunks will start today. It may be a couple of weeks before piles of branches and tree trunks are all picked up. We're asking folks, please, please, please be patient. Items must be curbside by October 10th for special storm debris yard waste collection. Next slide. We are currently supporting operations for our neighbors to the south. Hillsborough County is holding a food drive to benefit those affected by Hurricane Ian. Non-perishable, non-expired food items are being collected to support families in need. Donations can be dropped off at Hillsborough County Libraries, Community Resource Centers. A donation drop-off box is also located here at the lobby of the Hillsborough County Center. For more information, we ask our citizens to visit hcflgov.net/staysafe or call 833-HCSTORM. I would like to thank the Board, the County Administrator, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, Constitutional, municipalities, community partners, county employees, all the citizens of Hillsborough County, the Office of Emergency Management team for all your hard work and dedication to the citizens of Hillsborough County. I'll take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Dudley, you were, you are our hero. The precision at which you operated this process was, was stunning. I would like for you to introduce your, your, your team members, if you'd like, and ask them if they'd like to offer some guidance or some opportunity to understand the mammothness of the, of the response, because it was, when I've spoken to folks in the community about what we had to do to get ready, they were like, wow, who knew? So you've done an excellent job. I do have Commissioners in the queue that want to ask some questions, unless you want to introduce anyone from your team before we open it up.
We have here this morning Deputy County Administrator Greg Horadell, Hillsborough County Public Works Assistant County Administrator John Lyons, Hillsborough County Public Utilities Assistant County Administrator George Cassidy, Hillsborough County Director of Solid Waste Management Ken Byers, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Chief Dennis Jones, Hillsborough County Sheriff Chad Cronister, Hillsborough County Public School Superintendent Addison Davis are all here and available for your questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner White? Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead. Chief?
The true hero of the operations by operation chief, Katia Miller, has come into the lineup. So Katia Miller, folks.
Excellent. I ran into all of you over the last several days. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't have any questions, just comments to all of our staff that are here before us. Thank you so much. Just a heartfelt thanks for all of your hard work and everything that you have done during the storm and in the aftermath of the storm, representing a couple of outside agencies. Sheriff Chad Cronister, Superintendent Addison Davis, thank you for everything that you've done. Sheriff Cronister, I appreciate you and your folks keeping us safe, particularly in the aftermath of the storm. And I, I saw on social media where you even had some of your folks roll up their sleeves and grab chainsaws and help with clearing trees and whatnot. That's much appreciated. Superintendent Davis saw in the presentation today that you provided for some resources for transport. I know what an undertaking it is in getting your schools readied to serve as shelters. I appreciate that. And then just some little things that I'm aware of as a parent in the school district. For example, in the aftermath of the storm, knowing that we did not take that direct hit and, and did not experience the tragedy that they experienced down south, you even had the little things to deal with, like the SAT testing that was scheduled at your schools, and you had to work with yet another agency, College Board, and ultimately getting those postponed and everything. So I appreciate you and even recognize the, the little things that you've had to, to deal with as well in this. My district, maybe a little bit of Commissioner Cohen's district bore the brunt of this storm. Being a Commissioner that will be a bulldog for my constituents until the day I leave office, I want to thank Ms. Wise and her staff for putting up with me in the aftermath of this storm. I pressed them on getting more info to the public on power restoration. My constituents understood that it was going to take time. They were just looking for more information immediately following the storm. And I want to say that our staff and TECO rose to the occasion, and information quickly began to better flow. So if any TECO leadership or TECO Government Affairs folks are watching this meeting, I want to say you've done a fine job and commend you on a job well done. I'd be remiss if I didn't give thanks to all of the utility employees from other parts of the state and country that came to lend a hand. I also want to thank staff for keeping constant contact with Peace River Co-op for the folks in the southeast tip of the county. Much appreciated. I also pressed staff on a few minor debris cleanup issues, and they did a stellar job of expressing them. And while I have the floor, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of our employees at all levels of the organizational chart. And I recognize that many employees who do not normally serve an emergency response function were called upon to do their very best in an emergency response role. I'd like to close by sharing a story that highlights the outstanding job done by those at all levels, from upper management all the way to frontline employees. And as I tell this story, I want you to think about the fact that Hillsborough County is larger than many states. We are a huge government. So I had a constituent reach out to me, and he's, he's elderly, he's a cancer survivor, and he's an individual that could need to seek medical care at any moment. He reached out about a tree that was down on his street, and he lives at the end of a cul-de-sac. So he was, you know, literally trapped in his home. If he would have needed to seek medical care or something with that tree blocking the road, he wouldn't have been able to get to it. So I was alerted to this fact, got my legislative aide involved. And again, I want you to think about the fact that we're such a large county. So you, you think about a Commissioner and his staff receiving this call, and then we get the information to upper-level management. They have to pass down plans and instructions, then it has to get into the hands of frontline employees. I am pleased to say that in just over two hours from me receiving that call and being alerted to the fact that that tree was down, just over two hours in a county of this size, staff was on the scene, removing that tree, getting it cleared. So in just a couple of short hours from reaching out to a county commissioner's office, this gentleman's street was cleared, he was no longer trapped in his home, and he was able to, to get out in the event that he needed to. So that's just a, I'm sure there are many, many stories like that, but I just wanted to share that as a way to highlight the job well done. So thanks to all of you, again, our internal staff, once again Superintendent Davis, Sheriff Cronister. I could not be more pleased with the response in the aftermath of this storm. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I, I concur. I have about several stories very similar to that. When residents reached out to indicate that they were in danger, we certainly did respond. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. Words well taken there. And I, like everyone else, I don't even know where to begin to say how grateful this county is for everything that went on during this storm. As Commissioner White said, we, many people do not recognize that we have a population more than 12 different states and we're the size of the state of Rhode Island. It's a pretty daunting county to handle. And I'll say, first off, Mr. Dudley, you have really grown into the job, and I think that you handled this with a lot of adeptness, and I think that citizens had a lot of confidence in what you've, what you put out there. So thank you. It's a, it's a, it's really kind of mind-blowing. During Irma, I had time to spend at the brand-new shelter, the Operation Center, Emergency Operations Center, and spent quite a bit of time there, and I think it was being kind of broken in for the first time. It was amazing then. It was like something you see in a movie, in my mind, and I spent several days there and a night. I understand I slept on the floor that night because I couldn't get to sleep, so I was one of the last, but I understand, Ms. Wise, you had that experience as well, huh? The floor, the floor there. It's, and, and I know that that's something that we'll have to be, be working on. But, you know, I thought, when I saw the first illustration of the hurricane coming that you did, I haven't quite seen an animation like that where it was like a blade saw and a blade going across the state of Florida, and how appropriate, except it was probably too small, probably. It was more, you know, it was as bigger as it came in there, and the effects of this were, as we all know, extreme, and it was headed for right here. It, it changed course at the last minute, but we were, I think, very, very well-prepared. Maybe we've had a couple of times to, to get ready for this, but this was, and it's an amazing operation, logistics operation. As you mentioned, 3,500 staff, 3,500 Hillsborough County staff took place, or took part in getting ready here. I know on last Monday morning, our office got calls by a lot of parents saying, what in the world? Why are the schools being closed? And they were complaining, and it only took about till maybe noon or 1 o'clock for those calls to stop, and people go, oh, oh, sorry. We now understand that this is very serious, and I know that days ahead of time, we start to deal with the people that have special needs to get them into shelters, people that are electricity-dependent, people that cannot care for themselves, it's not easy to get to their places, and it's, it's a major operation, and that's kind of the first tier of what we do, days and days ahead of time. We've improved so much, 50 different shelters, 16 of them that are pet-friendly, which was in, back in 2004, a big hesitancy of people to come to the shelters is that they, they didn't have very many that could accommodate pets, but we've, you know, I haven't heard that anymore. We, the amount of logistics and operations that go into this is just amazing, and again, thank you to Hillsborough County Fire Rescue. I know last time I had the opportunity to go around after Irma with Chief Jones and see some of the damages that had been done, and one of my biggest concerns at the time was when we left the Emergency Operations Center, it was a big pool of water, a, a lake practically right outside the door of the center, which I understand has now been dealt with. So we're, we're, we're moving right along with that. The city fire and rescue, the city police, the sheriff's office of Hillsborough County, the schools have such a huge part in this. As I said, they closed down on Monday. They have to have a tremendous, I think, staff in there to help and assist along with the county staff to prepare our schools as emergency shelters. We have our transportation, as we all know, that's very important, and making sure that the roads are clear of wires and of trees once one of these storms blow through. Our solid waste, that I know everybody's going to be calling up our solid waste department, so get ready. That's coming. We were lucky to not get the tremendous amount of debris in other places, but I see it all piled up around my neighborhood. That will, that will be, we're kind of coming to that, that point now, as you know. Sewer and water, as the pumps go out during this, and that's kind of one of the first lines of operation, getting them up again. They're, also, they're not here today, but HART, our transportation, our transit system goes and gets people and makes sure that anyone who doesn't have any other means to get to a shelter... get to a shelter or to get to another place or to help is out there making sure that people can be accommodated. Feeding Tampa Bay has taken a big part of this as well. And it was mentioned, TECO, we had 300,000 people that didn't have electricity, and that is quite daunting. I know they had that huge amount of teams in here to get us, to get us back to shape, and that happened, I think, I keep watching the number of people still without electricity. And I think late Monday night, everybody got it for the first time. I think we had some new people coming online at that time, maybe just had some issues coming there. Legal Department, I know that you all take part in this and have to make sure that things are done all properly, and I know that it's a bigger burden than people might realize in doing that. And again, you do hate to point this all out because, because you know that you've missed people. But to the 3,500 Hillsborough County employees, to the employees of HART, to the employees of, you know, all the schools, the huge number of people that took place to make sure that Hillsborough County stayed as safe as possible and recovered as soon as possible. And I know we're going to be headed down south to help there, too. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you. I, I don't think it's quite appreciated, the logistics and, you know, what needs to be done to make this go forward. So we're very proud of you all from this board, from the people of Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Having visited the P-SOC on the day before the storm, I was just enormously impressed by everything that we were doing to keep this well-oiled machine running, and to the 3,500 Hillsborough County employees that Commissioner Kemp just mentioned, to all of the agencies outside. There's just no question that we are really appreciative. I mentioned to the county administrator that this is such a tremendous learning experience for everyone that goes through it. And how our organization can be strengthened as a result of everybody's experience is really, really crucial as we move forward. You know, these events don't happen one after another, and if it's another five years, and God willing, I hope it's longer than that, until we have this again, it's really important that we document everyone's experiences so that the people coming after that didn't go through this will have the benefit of what you all went through. I wanted to talk for just a minute about the power situation and the situation with TECO, because in District One, the evacuation was the main issue in advance of the storm. Power outages really became the main issue after the storm was over. And before I leave the evacuation, I want to say that I thought people did a tremendous job of following the orders, making sound decisions. The stores were orderly, people were not hoarding supplies. There was, there was plenty of product in a lot of the grocery stores as people were getting what they needed. I, I really observed people taking this very, very seriously and understanding immediately the gravity of the situation, and certainly that was borne out by what we saw. In terms of the TECO situation and the aftermath of the storm, I believe TECO did everything they possibly could to stage themselves appropriately in advance of this. They had 3,000 personnel from outside of the area dispatched all over, ready to strike the minute that the storm was over. Their communication effort at the beginning was a bit rocky, as they themselves have conceded. There were some problems with their outage map, but they very quickly took ownership of that. I know the county administrator reached out to them about that very early on, and that started Archie Collins, the president of TECO, communicating with me by text for, for a good deal of this as we were trying to get people's power online. Having said that, though, the bottom line is that three days into this, 20% of the people were still without power. And given that this storm only grazed this area, to have 300,000 people out of power from what is, for us, not a particularly noteworthy weather event, I think does reveal once again the weakness of our grid. And TECO themselves said that they have 12,000 miles of lines, 6,000 are buried and 6,000 are not. We really have got to focus on getting the rest of these lines buried as quickly as we can. I know a lot of neighborhoods have tried to get their lines buried, and they oftentimes run into a lot of red tape and difficulty and expense in doing that. We have got to do better at finding ways to facilitate that process. Because what I found with the whole power outage issue was, if you were part of the group that didn't get your power back right away, after two days, all your food, you know, people figured out that if they could make it a day, they could, they could not open the refrigerator, or they could put things on ice, and they could sort of jerry-rig things. But as it went on and on, it's really impossible to do that. And given the price of food, given the fact that a lot of people had stocked up, this was a major event for these households. The other thing that really revealed itself was the people on oxygen, people that have medical needs, that power goes out, and that really does become a major source of anxiety for them. So I just wanted to say, again, this was a phenomenal, phenomenal learning experience. I know with, along with everyone, I was so impressed by everything all of you did. Sheriff, thank you for reaching out and calling in the middle of the storm. Chief Jones, everybody, it was just John Lyons driving around, looking at the, at all the debris down right after. And also to TECO, who, who were right there doing everything they possibly could. But we've got to make it so that their job isn't as big the next time around. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. The staff of this county is just amazing. And Mr. Dudley, I, I want to tell you, not, not for the first time, because I said this in your handling of the, as we went through the emergent, long-term emergency of the, of the pandemic, but again, I was so impressed by your being the front spokesperson for our county and your, you know, natural talent and experience with, with this leadership. You're, you have just the perfect combination of gravity, gravitas, and accessibility and clarity. As you explain in front of the cameras in these intense emergency situations with, with people, you know, very, very fearful, you are able to, to lead calmly and explain where we're at and what we're doing, and help our citizens to understand the situation and what they need to do and how we're helping. You are neither talking down nor talking up, you're neither avoiding the limelight nor seeking the limelight. I, I just couldn't be more proud of your leadership of this county in that role of spokesperson for the emergency management team. And thank you very much for that very professional job. Our whole emergency management response is led by the great departments that we see here, all working together in, in just a very professional way. The leadership of all these departments that we see here, the utilities, the solid waste, the emergency management, fire rescue, roads, Mr. Lyons, I can't think of what that department's called right now, but our sheriff, our school superintendent, and certainly the administration. Your leadership is effective because you are all leading by example of rolling up your sleeves, your commitment to, to throwing out everything and just doing what needs to be done, and, and leading by that example of your willingness to go above and beyond your duty, outside your job descriptions, and just work together and do what needs to be done. And all of that is exemplified by our county administrator, who spent days moving in to our P-SOC center and helping to coordinate, and also, of course, very proud of your representation of us in your role in front of the cameras and, and your discussion. We are very fortunate to have the people that we have here and the, the staffs that you all lead and manage, and beyond that, all of the county staff who was called upon to go outside their regular jobs and fulfill emergency duty, and everybody stepping up to do what needed to be done, some really hard work and in a really tough situation. So we have just so much to be proud of here. We are fortunate that our biggest problem now is, one of the biggest problems is debris removal. And I'm really, you know, of course, I appreciate Ms. Byers' commitment to customer service. It's amazing, as, as all of you are in your commitment to customer service. And I'm really glad that our local newspaper reported that Hillsborough County's debris removal service is the best by far, by a mile, more than any of our surrounding counties. I don't think, people take it for granted here because we have such a constant record of good customer service, but Pasco County, Pinellas County, you don't get extra debris pickup. You take your debris to the dump, or you bag it all up for the regular solid yard waste disposal service. You do not get the grappler coming by for a week. Our solid waste crews are driving around all the streets, making notes of where that grappler needs to go and go pick up everything that everybody has put together at the street. That is a, a really great service that Hillsborough County provides that our other, other places do not provide that. We have had an amazing response to this emergency. And as has been said, our county administrator is now going to be leading us in the continuing work of learning as we do from each emergency. As, as good a job as we've done, we, we still pull together and learn about anything that might be done differently, or better facilities we need to provide, facilities we need to improve for the next time. And I've already heard some good ideas coming out, like one especially from Mr. Horagel, because as we are all aware, this is not our last hurricane. TECO is a key component, as you, as you mentioned, to these kinds of situations. I myself lost everything in my refrigerator, found it a good opportunity to go ahead and clean out the fridge, and I, my, my refrigerator is now sparkling and, and empty. But I think we, it would be maybe a good idea to, after we've all had a chance to assess how this, what, what we went through here and how we might do things better, to possibly meet together with TECO so that we could give them the benefit of what we've been hearing from our constituents and hear what they've heard from their customers and how we might help them to work together in, to strengthen the grid, certainly. I've heard that from several people. And also to improve the information that's put out. I think people are willing, or more willing, to deal with even a lengthy outage if they know when it's going to be, if they, if they get good information on that map and see, and the map can help you see the, you know, the whole gamut of the, the range of the problem and help you understand you're not alone and they're coming. So, you know, I think that, that information would be key, as well as strengthening the grid. I'm just going to say one more thing that comes out to me that hasn't been talked about, and that is the fact that our efforts and our goals of improving our, and converting septic to modernized sewage system is really highlighted in this event. In the first place, people don't realize, I don't think, how integral the electricity is to the sewage system. So we've had to ask our customers to take shorter showers and put less water down, postpone a dishwasher load or whatever until this can pass because the system needs electricity. But when you think of the low-pressure sewer system that is in Ruskin and Wyomama entails every single house having their own little lift station in their front yard with a little red light on top that goes off when the electricity goes off to let our crews know your sewage is not working anymore, if you've got that antiquated low-pressure sewer system. And what that means in the coastal areas of Ruskin, and not just the coast, but areas on the flooding rivers of the Upper Manatee in Wyomama, the Upper Alephaya in, in Riverview, what that means is if we have even a little floodwater, even, you know, if we have five feet of water, all bets are off. But if we had six inches, a foot of water, those little septic systems are not working anymore, and people are waiting around in their yards trying to attend to things in, in very toxic sewage in the floodwaters. In an area like Gibsonton that is all still on septic, floods there from the coast means everybody there is waiting around in sewage in their floodwaters. And I read about one lady whose house was flooded, not in our county, but in, in one of the worst-hit counties, and she ended up having to go to the emergency room with infected wounds, just from the exposure to the floodwater. So, you know, it's, it's a long project to fix that, but this highlights the importance of fixing and converting our septic to sewer as soon as we can, as much as we can in that way. So, you know, on that happy note, I, I do want to return to gratitude for all that you all have done in seeing us through this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm just going to keep it to the kiss rule, too. I understand Superintendent Davis, you've been standing for about 40 minutes, and you need to leave.
No, I'm good. I gotta go to, I gotta leave them up. I got seven bosses, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Awesome job. This team was phenomenal. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
But just want to thank the team for their leadership and the unity that was displayed, particularly every time the media was reporting to us. You can see the unity among the leadership, and I thank you all for that. You all have done an amazing job, everyone. Continue, because another storm is going to come. Continue working together. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner White?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Smith's comments led me to a question for staff. I know we have members of the public that are watching this meeting and perhaps some members of the media. So with regards to the storm debris pickup, I'd like for staff to touch on that. If I recall correctly, those are separate contracts that are separate from the ordinary yard debris collection, and I also recall that, that it's handled, at least in some cases, maybe all cases, by different companies, not even the same company. So I'd like for you to touch on that and also just give us an idea of the anticipated start date, the anticipated completion date, and just an idea start date, the anticipated completion date, and just an idea of whether or not they intend to just scatter throughout the county immediately, or is this going to be handled in zones?
Kimberly Byers, Solid Waste Department Director. All good questions, and thank you for asking those, because we really want to get this message out. We do have two separate debris contractors, one in the north portion of the county, that's Phillips and Jordan, and one in the south portion of the county, and that's Ashbrit. They will be following our yard waste routes, so we'll be able to systematically close those out. And in addition, we'll have eyes on those routes. Our garbage trucks will also be following those routes. They'll be picking up the bagged and containerized waste. They've been doing that since Monday. Lots of people taking opportunities to bring it to our yard waste sites, too, which we opened four of those up on Friday. We've seen over about 6,000 folks visit those sites, so they're really taking advantage of those, and we're really happy about that. They did start debris collection today for our debris management contractors. They will, they anticipate it will take about 30 days to totally complete all those routes. In addition, you know, we were estimating about 300,000 to 400,000 cubic yards. In comparison to Irma, we did about 860,000 cubic yards, and that took about almost two months, a month and a half. So we're trying to really get in and get out and let these folks go to southwest Florida and help them out. So again, we'll be following those yard waste ma, yard waste routes. We actually, today, will have something on our website that will show where the contractors are, what they're, what's in progress, what's completed, and what's waiting for attention. And then next week, though, we would like to be able to put something on the website that says when you might see those trucks come by, as soon as we get an idea of what those, what the progress looks like. Does that answer your question?
It does, and more importantly, that gives the public an opportunity to hear this. I sort of knew the answers to the questions. I'm glad that I had everything right. But yeah, I think the important thing for the public to hear is, number one, these are not your normal waste haulers that are going to be taking care of the storm debris pickup. And secondly, bear with us, this is going to take a minimum of a month. I'll go back to what I said in my comments, in that Hillsborough County is larger than many states. This is a tremendous undertaking, and it's going to be a while. It's going to be a minimum of 30 days. But I just want to say to the public to be patient, to understand these are different haulers, and we'll get through this. We'll work our way through it. Ms. Byer, is your team in charge of the project management of the storm debris collection, just like with ordinary solid waste?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, as time goes on, if constituents do have questions or concerns, I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say that our offices are open as commissioners. Ms. Byer, I'm sure that you'll have a way for folks to contact you. But again, in delivering this message, it's going to be a minimum of 30 days. It's just going to take some time. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'll be fast, but I can't think honestly, I wanted to thank everybody first, but these are two issues that I know people are really attentive right now to thinking about the next one, and some of the things that we might think about. And it seems to me, two things that people still, that we need to get more information out about, when the next one comes, or somehow start to make sure that people understand, is I was kind of taken back by the fact that people did not seem to understand storm surge and the importance of storm surge. I, it came as a natural to me, but, you know, up and down the coast, when a hurricane's coming, whether they're going to be hit or not, let's say one is going further up north, but it's pushing this tremendous amount of water, as we all know, and Tampa Bay is very, one of the most precarious places, actually, in Florida because of the, how it's not very deep. So really starting to, I guess, emphasize that more and start to make sure that people understand that even if the hurricane isn't directed at you, the storm surge will probably affect you in a very tremendous way. And that's the big killer in these hurricanes, is the storm surge, not so much the wind. And to have that out, but also the fact that evacuation, you don't have to go across the state or to Atlanta, or it's difficult to get in a really safe place in Florida if something is aimed here, as we all know. But to just get inland, like five miles, seven miles, you know, to just communicate that to people, to somehow, you know, get that message out, that they don't have to escape hours and hours. I just talked to someone the other day who wasn't from here and who moved here, and they said when the hurricane was coming, they Googled, "Where's the safest place in Florida to be away from a hurricane?" They live right here, and it was right on the border of Georgia. And so they kind of like were aiming for the border of Georgia to go to. And I think what you have to be clear with people that that's, because otherwise it makes the evacuation and all of that just that much more difficult, that much more in terms of gas needed, our roads and all of that. So I just, I think those are two important points for the future, and then maybe we can, in the future, too, Commissioner Cohen, the, you know, I've long thought about the undergrounding of some more of our electric is extremely important. They've had it at McDill forever, because it's a smart thing to do and keeps them ready. And so maybe to see if we can, you know, I think, move in the future and set that up.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. I'm going to wrap up by saying, thank you, Mr. Dudley. Thank you, team. Thank you, Ms. Wise. You are amazing, absolutely amazing. You and your entire team did an amazing job. As we've heard, resiliency is an effort that we need to put some elbow grease into. Not only do we have an issue with septic systems, but those in our community that live on wells, when they don't have power, they don't have water either. And that's a problem. We also have an issue with the fact that this storm happened to hit at the end of the month, where our low-income families that spent quite a bit getting ready for hurricane, buying canned goods or buying other things, supplies, maybe got in a car and drove a long distance in order to find a place, because I found on Tuesday in looking for a hotel space for, for my son, who lived in a flood zone, Zone A, that there were only three hotel spaces, literally rooms, left by midday Tuesday morning, or early Tuesday morning. So people had to go a long way to find a place to go in the event that they didn't have family members to stay with, they were out of harm's way. Or there was the perception that they didn't want to go to a shelter. But what I did hear is that the people who did go to shelters were welcomed, were well-cared for, were treated well. And what I did hear were individuals who were on oxygen, who weren't sure they needed to go to a shelter. But when I explained to them on social media as a comment, but, you know, if your power goes out, what happens to you? And they went, "Yeah, maybe I should go." So we do have a great opportunity to help educate our citizenry about how to keep themselves safe. But we did see a great response. We did see a fabulous communication on the county's part. I heard from many, many of our residents that said, "You know what? You guys did a great job of making sure we understood what we needed to do, what we were facing, and how to stay safe." So I believe while we may have had some challenges on the electrical side, on the power side, the county did an amazing job. The whole team here did an amazing job of helping people recognize how to stay safe. But oftentimes, it's difficult to realize that a 15-foot storm surge is usually over your roof line. And if your house fills up with water, you got to know how to get on your roof or you needed to not be there. So evacuation orders are critically important to keep our communities safe, and doing it early, so you don't get caught, like so many of our residents in the south did. To save lives, we have to actually respond. Lastly, I just want to thank our power folks, our linemen, all the folks that went out and cleared the roads, cleared the trees, and cleared the lines. I had the pleasure, or honor, honestly, of, at the shift change on Saturday morning, for all the linemen that showed up and had been working, who were sleeping in hurricane or emergency housing trailers all over the Florida state fairgrounds, I had the shift change when the trucks came in and refilled up with fuel and the staff changed over, to tell those folks that we're putting literally their lives on the line to get our power back up. Thank you, because of the amount of effort that was taken. We have an opportunity to keep our community safe, and we're doing a good job at doing that. But storm surge is a big issue. And as we saw the water leave the bay so quickly, it can turn around and come back that quickly. The four-hour period between when I started to see Ian turn towards the, you know, our southwest neighbors was amazing. And four hours is not time for people to respond. It just isn't. We know we have a timeline to be able to let people know how long it takes to get a folks out, and as large as our county is, it's not 12 hours. So I thank everyone that responded, our residents, all of our teams, our schools, our teachers, that had to get their rooms ready and then had to get the rooms ready again for both of those experiences. So thank you, everyone, and I'm glad we survived through it. But as we do, every time we look at our, what we do, we look at how to do it better. So I thank all those that are still working on making it better, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Ms. Wise?
And Mr. Dudley didn't say, "And there's still two more months left."
Yeah, I haven't taken the boards off my windows yet, so they're going to stay up there until we're done with this.
Yes, we're hoping and praying. And as I mentioned, we had some folks here today, but there were many other staff members, especially Audrey Ziegler and others. You know, Audrey was, the team was in charge of operations, so I didn't want you to think that this was all-inclusive.
I do. And one of the things I did, I forgot to mention, is that, you know, this emergency part of this isn't really over. As I mentioned, a lot of families spent their last dollars getting ready for this storm right before the rent was due. So I reached out to General Moody about taking a look at potentially a short term or a reprieve on evictions. We stayed it for a week due to the emergency. But we saw, over the last three months, over 3,000 evictions, the highest Hillsborough County has ever seen in history, over the last three months. And now these folks are possibly looking at an eviction because they used that money to get ready for a hurricane. So I've reached out to the Attorney General for some guidance on what is possible to help our families stay stable through this time period, and hopefully we'll heal back from her soon. With that, thank you so much.
Thank you. We can now move to item D1. This is the second of two required public hearings. Adam Gormley will take us through this, and there is nobody signed up to speak on this item.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gormley?
Good morning, Commissioners. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item D1 is a public hearing to consider the adoption of a school concurrency proportionate share mitigation agreement amongst the county, the School Board of Hillsborough County, and Fishhawk West Investments LLC. The purpose of the agreement is to satisfy school concurrency for the Hawks Fern Phase IV subdivision, which consists of 25 single-family dwellings. The agreement requires a payment of $151,544 to construct four high school student stations to accommodate the impacts of the project. And the high school will be constructed, the student stations will be constructed as part of high school U-U-U, which is located on the east side of West Lake Drive in Wyomama. This is a public hearing, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do not have anyone that signed up to speak to this item. Are there any comments from the board?
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is item D2. This, too, is a public hearing for ambulance service. Gene Early will take us through item D2 as well as D3.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Gene Early, Department Director for Healthcare Services. As you probably know, under federal Florida statute, any entity providing prehospital or interfacility advanced life support services must obtain a certificate of public convenience and necessity of COPCN, which sometimes it's referred to, from each county in which the entity plans to operate. In Hillsborough County, the board has established a process in ordinance for issuing COPCNs through a hearing officer and the Emergency Medical Planning Council, often referred to as the E-MPC. Florida Healthcare Centers, Inc., or, I'm sorry, Florida Health Sciences Center, Inc., doing business as Tampa General, TGH, and Aramed, has made an application for a COPCN to operate one advanced life support ambulance to transport patients between its own facilities. Following the established processes, the application was referred to a hearing officer to conduct a public hearing and consider the merits of the application in promoting public convenience and necessity. The hearing officer's report and recommendation was then reviewed and considered by the Emergency Medical Planning Council, and the E-MPC has provided its own recommendation. Both the hearing officer and E-MPC recommendations have been provided to you. The final step is for the BOCC to hold its own public hearing, consider the hearing officer and E-MPC recommendations, and make a final determination on the application. The recommendation is to approve a certificate of public convenience and necessity for Florida Health Sciences Center, Inc., at the level of advanced life support in the class ground and subclass interfacility transfer, which one permitted ambulance within Hillsborough County for the purpose of providing patient transportation between any facility owned or operated by Florida Health Sciences Center, Inc. This item has no financial impact. This is a public hearing, and I believe we have a representative from Tampa General signed up to speak, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. I do see that we have John Visoke that signed up virtually to speak to this, but is the representative from Tampa General online? And wishes to speak?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, no one's online, and John is not attending.
Well, then, we will close the public hearing.
Move approval?
Move approval by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Smith. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everyone. And item D3.
Item D3 is also a public hearing. Mr. Early will take us through that one as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Early?
Commissioners, as you're aware, under Florida statute, any entity providing prehospital or interfacility advanced life support services must obtain a COPCN with each county, within, from each county in which the entity plans to operate. In Hillsborough County, the board has the established policy in ordinance for issuing COPCNs through a hearing officer and the E-MPC. Gallon Care, Inc., doing business as Healthcare, or HCA Florida, Brandon Hospital, has made the application for a COPCN to operate three advanced life support ambulances to transport patients between its own facilities. Following the established process, the application was referred to a hearing officer to conduct a public hearing and consider the merits of the application in promoting public convenience and necessity. The hearing officer's report and recommendations was then reviewed and considered by the Emergency Medical Planning Council, and the E-MPC has provided its own recommendation. Both the hearing officer and the E-MPC recommendations have been provided to you. The final step is the board to hold its own public hearing, consider the hearing officer and E-MPC recommendations, and make final determination on the application. The recommendation is to approve the COPCN for Gallon Care, Inc., doing business as HCA Florida Brandon Hospital, at the level of advanced life support in the class ground and subclass interfacilities facility transfer with two permitted ambulances within Hillsborough County for the purposes of providing patient transportation between any facility owned or operated by Gallon Care, Inc. This item has no financial impact. This is a public hearing, and I believe we have a representative from Brandon Hospital signed up to speak. We are available for any questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I do have Robert Capeish has signed up in person. Mr. Capeish, would you like to join us? Mr. Capeish, would you like to join us? It's on. It's on now.
All right.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Robert Capeish, HCA Florida Healthcare. On behalf of HCA Brandon Hospital, I want to thank you all and express our gratitude for taking the time today to review our application for EMS transport. I also wanted to thank your staff. They have been wonderful throughout this entire process. Worked tirelessly hours to get us here today, which has been very nice. And I'm here to answer any questions, provide any further details or explanation should you have any. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm not seeing anyone in the queue to ask questions at this point. Move approval. Move approval.
Second.
I was going to close the public hearing. It'll take a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. Our next item is item G1. This is to receive the Arts Council's Division's annual report with a special appearance by Mr. Randy Cohen, Vice President of Research Americans for the Arts. And Martine Collier is also here as well, the Executive Director of the Arts Council.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for having us deliver our annual report this morning. Could we have the first slide, please? Yes, our annual report. And can you move to the second slide? Thank you. On May 19th, 2021, the Board of County Commission approved ordinance 2116, which established the Arts Council as a division of Hillsborough County Government. This change became effective October 1st, 2021. The ordinance requires that the Council file annually with the Board a report summarizing its activities conducted during the previous year and telling a little bit about activities going forward. We are pleased to present this FY 2022 report as we celebrate our first year as part of county administration. Next slide, please. Becoming part of county government has many advantages, including significant cost savings and enhanced community outreach. That said, transforming from being an independent operation to becoming part of the county has been a steep learning curve. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of the county staff who have gone above and beyond in assisting us with this transition. They truly have, and we so appreciate it. Next slide. As this assimilation has occurred and we have gained greater knowledge of county processes, we have launched a strategic initiative to identify ways in which we can better align our grant programs to county procedures and standard county contracts. For FY 2023, we are redesigning our cultural development grant agreement to more closely align with county contracts. And this will also assist our grantees by streamlining the reimbursement process, which we think is very positive. Next slide. The Arts Council has always worked to assist artists in the community to become successful entrepreneurs and have traditionally done workshops to benefit these very important members of our community. This year, we partnered with Entrepreneur Collaborative Center to conduct the first-ever Business of Arts series. Over the course of six weeks, all aspects of being a successful arts entrepreneur were covered, from developing a business plan, evaluating contracts, creating a website, and more. The response from attendees was more than enthusiastic, and we plan to launch this series again for FY 2023. Next slide. The mission of the Arts Council is to support, promote, and advance arts and culture in Hillsborough County. And advocacy plays a key role in this. We belong to the Florida Cultural Alliance and to play an active role in communicating with elected officials and advocating for state and federal funding for the arts in our community. In FY 22, thanks to the efforts of arts advocates statewide, the arts budget submitted by the Florida Division of Cultural Affairs was fully funded. This resulted in the awarding of $3.3 million in total funding for 40 Hillsborough County cultural organizations. And in most cases, these organizations received more than twice what they did the previous year. Next slide. The overarching goal of the Arts Council's strategic plan developed in 2020 is to ensure that every citizen in Hillsborough County has equitable access to arts and culture. Since then, in addition to holding workshops for cultural organizations regarding this important topic, we have embedded DEI into our grant programs, emphasizing access and community engagement. Next slide. The Arts Council's Professional Development for Artists Grant Program allows artists to request funding for either a piece of permanent equipment or an education experience to improve their art practice. It is exciting to see how this funding energizes innovation. The Community Arts Grant Program, which is project support, fills a unique need. Launched in 2018 specifically to assist in providing cultural equity, this grant is available to any nonprofit, not just arts organizations, for projects of a cultural nature. Next slide. The Cultural Development Program has been in existence for more than 20 years. It provides critically important general operating support to cultural organizations. Next slide. Every five years or so, Americans for the Arts, the national arts advocacy organization, launches a national study of the economic impact of the arts and cultural sector. This study evaluates both the spending of cultural organizations and the event-related spending of their audiences. Local study partners from around the country participate and in return, receive the findings for their particular community. In 2016 and 17, the Arts Council served as a study partner, gathering financial information and collecting audience surveys from Hillsborough County cultural organizations. The results were released in 2017. Interestingly, the figure of $433.2 million in total economic activity was well above the median of similarly sized study regions. Earlier this year, Americans for the Arts launched their sixth Arts and Economic Prosperity Study. And once again, the Arts Council is one of the 395 study partners nationally participating in this data collection. However, AEP 6 is making a significant expansion beyond previous studies by centering on equity and inclusion across the study. This initiative seeks to represent BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color, and ALANA, African Latinx Asian-Arab Native American Identifying Communities. This is a segment of the nonprofit arts and culture sector that it was felt had not, had been underrepresented in past studies. For the first time, AEP 6 will establish a benchmark of arts and culture organizations that primarily serve communities of color and the audiences that attend their events. Study findings, including those specific to Hillsborough County, will be released about a year from now, in the fall of 2023. After the results are released, the Arts Council has scheduled Randy Cohen, Vice President of Research for Americans for the Arts, to come to Tampa to speak to various community gatherings to help in interpreting and promoting the Hillsborough County results. And Randy did the same thing following the results that were released in 2017. It is a happy coincidence that Randy Cohen was scheduled to be in Tampa today to speak to the Board of the Florida Division of Cultural Affairs about this study. Although that meeting was canceled due to Hurricane Ian, Randy graciously offered to come to this meeting today to provide some additional information about this research and more specifically, answer any questions you may have. He is the authority in the United States on this and the spokesperson for it. So this is a great opportunity to have your questions answered. So now I would like to ask Randy to join me at the podium.
All right. Good afternoon. Thank you, Martine. Commissioners, so great to be with you. And let me just start by saying, as the out-of-towner in the room, but native Floridian, by the way, our hearts, prayers have been with everybody in this community and people across Florida, and it's just been amazing listening to the response. And honestly, the last couple of days, being around town, you know, it's hard to know it even happened in some places. So the response has just been phenomenal. So congratulations, and, you know, you're with us all the time. I just want to start by saying thank you to the Commissioners. Thank you for your investment in the arts. And Hillsborough County is a wonderful arts community. It's diverse, it's rich, it's culturally, a lot of cultural riches here, and the benefits are many. You just heard some of the economic impact findings from our last study. Arts are an industry, and we're changing the conversation with this research, right? We all get that the arts are, you know, improve our quality of lives. They create the places that we want to live and work. But the fact is, arts organizations are businesses. They employ people locally. They purchase goods and services from other businesses in the community and help drive tourism and marketing the community. And just to add a couple of interesting numbers, Martine gave you a great wrap-up of the last study. We found in Hillsborough County last time, 42% of attendees, of the millions of attendees to arts events in this county, came from outside the county. And they average $67 in event-related spending per person per event. And what do I mean by that? You know, think of the last time you went to an arts event. You know, did you slip out of the house, see the show, and run home before nobody noticed? No, you know, you paid for parking, you had dinner, and you got little ones at home. Double the cost of evening on babysitting. Lots of economic activity related to that arts event. Not only that, of that 42% of non-local attendees, 17% of those folks had an overnight cost. They averaged $212 per person per event. So you get that head in a bed, right? You know, the cash registers really start ringing. And worth noting, all of those figures are above the national average. Let me give you one other number that's above the national average. Because, you know, a lot of people are coming here. This is just a fantastic destination anyway. We asked those non-local attendees, "Why are you here?" You know, "We're glad you're here." "Are you here on business? Are you here visiting friends and family?" 79% said, "We came specifically for this arts event." Not only that, we asked their local counterparts, people who live in the county, "What if this arts event wasn't taking place?" "Would you have stayed home, done something else, watched Netflix?" We gave them options. 51% said, "Oh, we traveled to a different community to attend a similar kind of arts event." So when we invest in the arts, your investment is not only improving quality of life, but it's stimulating an industry that brings people to the county. They spend money, and it's keeping our neighbors and our hard-won discretionary dollars right here in town. And just to augment, you know, with a little flip side of that, not only the arts providing good economic benefits for the arts, our National Public Opinion Survey shows 72% of the American population says "The arts unify communities regardless of age, race, or ethnicity." 73% say, "The arts help me understand other cultures in my community," right? You know, we're all trying to, especially post-pandemic, reconnect our communities. So thank you for having me. Congratulations on the investment of your work, the wonderful leadership of Martine and her staff, truly exceptional. I've known her and worked with this community for many years. So we're happy to take any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cohen, for being here today. We truly appreciate that. And that was an excellent report. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'm so excited about this. As the member of the Board that is the representative on the Arts Council, I have really enjoyed this transition. But I really want to welcome Mr. Cohen here today. We are so fortunate to have you here with us on this day of, that we received this report from the Arts Council. Your organization just does marvelous work in that research and publishing of the report on economic impact of the arts in hundreds of communities across the United States. But we're really lucky to have so many places in Florida on your, in your report and data on the economic impact of the arts, specifically in the city of Tampa, as well as specifically in Hillsborough County. This is just a boon to us to be able to understand and explain to people the, some of what you just highlighted, the hundreds of millions of dollars of benefit of the arts in our community. I'm really, it's really good to know that your study efforts are expanding in the work that you've been doing on equity and inclusion and diversity. This county, this Board has been also looking at everything we do through an equity lens now. And I want to highlight that the Arts Council, under Martine's leadership, has also done great work in making sure that we are inclusive and diverse in our grantees, as well as the membership of the Arts Council Board itself and the panel that does the granting. I mean, that is a key to reflecting the diversity in our community in everything that we do and including everybody in arts. I am really happy about this move of the Arts Council under the wing of the county government. And I, in celebrating this first year of that, I want to express gratitude to Mr. Ron Barton of Economic Development, who was a key, I know, to helping Martine and myself to understand what that process would entail, what would be the pros and cons, help us weigh the decisions, help the Board, the Arts Council to weigh the decision to make that move and help that move. There have been just a lot of departments in this county that have contributed and just stepped up and really helped a lot, from communications to economic development and all those departments that were listed in your slide. And welcome the Arts Council under our wing. I think in our first year, we learned a lot about what we'll do in the second year. And, but it has been a really, a really good move that will really help to broaden the reach of arts and the access to arts and culture throughout this very diverse county that we have and all the very diverse communities that we have, and making sure that every community has access and the ability to express what they want. Because their needs and desires for the arts in New Tampa are different than Carrollwood, are different than Ruskin, are different in Riverview, and different in the city of Tampa and the city of Temple Terrace and Plant City. And being in the county, I think we are really able to address those needs and help those communities express their, what is important to them in the arts. So I'm really excited about this and very much welcome, Mr. Cohen. Thank you so much for coming here and giving us the highlights of your study. For anybody else who wants to go into it, go to americansforthearts.org. And you can really delve into the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study and go on the map and find Tampa and find Hillsborough County and see all the data that we've got there. I'm really looking forward to study number six coming out soon. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Smith. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Cohen. I'm going to recognize Commissioner Cohen, but Commissioner Smith, I unfortunately have an appointment, so I'm going to hand you, virtually hand you the gavel. There you go. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Cohen, welcome. You and I aren't related, are we?
Well, it's probably somewhere up the line, yeah.
But, but welcome, and thank you so much for the information that you bring with you. I want to just start my remarks by thanking this Board and our county administrator, because this Board sees the value of the arts, and we put our money where our mouth is because we understand how important a vibrant arts and culture scene is to our community. And over the years, when I find myself advocating on behalf of different arts funding, I always get very swept up into how much it means to the community and how enriching it is. But it's really, really good to always come back to the fact that it's such an economic driver, it makes such a difference. I want to just tell a quick story. In 2013, I was on the Stroud Center Board as a city council member, and we were just coming out of the Great Recession, and there was some debate about whether or not this show called The Book of Mormon was appropriate or not for Tampa audiences and whether or not the audiences here would like it. And it was touring, and it was coming. And it came, and downtown completely exploded around it. All of a sudden, the restaurants were busy, there were people everywhere, people were noticing it. And the same thing happened a few years later with Hamilton. When Hamilton would open up, it would actually cause a huge influx of people into our urban core, and a lot of them came, as you pointed out, from outside the county. People come to Hillsborough County for that type of arts and cultural experience, and it's such an integral part of what we do here. And people forget, because it makes us all feel so good, that it is a tremendous economic driver and that those shows come, people rent hotel rooms, they eat out in restaurants, the patrons come, they park, they, in many cases, spend the night, and it's just a great, great investment. So thank you so much for pointing that out. Thank you all for the work that you do on the Arts Council. We get the thank you notes all the time from the different organizations that benefit from it, and it shows the breadth, the breadth in the community of how many diverse organizations are benefiting from this money. It's really, really remarkable. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. I knew you'd be excited by that report. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And Martine, it's been a joy to see kind of the evolution of the Arts Council, and I know a lot of it, too. I want to thank Commissioner Smith, because I know that you've just rolled up your sleeves and taken just such a great interest in working with the Council and bringing it along, and it's been truly an evolution and a great one at that. And I know I get a little bit of a firsthand seat, because I can, from time to time, hear Commissioner Smith's excitement about where things are going. But it's been great to watch it and to know kind of the democratization of the Arts Council and the broadening of where you're going. And, you know, just today, to have the presentation, BIPOC, Black Indigenous and People of Color, as part of the focus, the equity lens that we've had. So not only, I mean, it's just so many things that the arts can bring to us, feeding our soul, bringing us a sense of place, but also you've made the business case for why the arts are, bring so much to our communities and why, I don't think this Board has to be so convinced about their contribution to the area. But we, we thank you for being here today, Mr. Cohen, and just for bringing this presentation. It's very exciting to see this come along in Hillsborough County.
So I would like to mention that this great information Randy referenced about who's comes to from out of town and all of that, we have volunteers at the cultural organizations doing these Audience Intercept studies. So what we did, we had prepared a T-shirt for them. Let's Make Art Count, and so that they can wear, so everybody knows, so if you see this in a cultural organization, let them pick your brain. And we want to give this shirt because it has Americans for the Arts Economic Prosperity logo, Americans for the Arts logo, and Hillsborough County. We are giving this to Randy so he can take it back to Washington and wear it, and we're going to have a photo op with him in it in front of Hillsborough County, so everyone will know where he was today. Here you go.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Martine.
And just a reminder, Randy will be back a year from now, once the results are released, and we'll hope to talk to him again then. So thank you, Randy, so much for your valuable insights and on this study and for joining us today. And next slide, last slide? Well, it basically just says, thank you, and there we, that's back, anyway. As we celebrate the Arts Council's first year as a division of county government, I really genuinely want to thank the B.O.C.C. for your ongoing support and visionary support of culture in Hillsborough County. And I also would like to send kudos to Commissioner Smith. She is an active and engaged member of the Arts Council Board, and she helps us in so many ways, as all of you do, because I know you all care about the arts, and that's very special, to have 100% of the county commissioners caring about the arts. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much, Martine and Mr. Cohen, for joining us today, and thanks, everyone, for their comments. And with that, we'll move on in the agenda. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We have one regular agenda item. It is item B1, and this is regarding a reimbursement resolution for our utility system bonds. And Kevin Bricky from Management and Budget will present this item.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Bricky, Management and Budget. Item B1 is asking the Board to adopt a resolution establishing the county's intent to reimburse itself from a future financing for certain eligible expenses incurred in connection with various water and wastewater utility system capital projects. Water Resources currently has several budgeted large capital projects, including the One Water Campus, a wastewater treatment facility to remedy some current service deficiencies. Water Resources expects that there'll be a 2023 long-term financing that would provide funding for these improvements, but also has an immediate need to fund some early critical aspects of these projects prior to that financing. This reimbursement resolution will enable the Department to proceed with the early aspects of those projects and will enable the county to use proceeds from that future financing to reimburse itself for the eligible portion of those early expenditures. And with that, I would ask for approval.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Cohen, second by Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise?
We are now onto future discussion items, if any.
Right. And so, does anyone have any future discussion items? Seeing none, we're adjourned.